Okay, good morning. This is the AFECT Provider Group PC docket number twenty-four dash three-two-six-six-two dash CON. Um, thank you for being here. Uh, the AFECT Provider Group, the applicants in this matter seek a certificate of need for the establishment of a new healthcare facility under Connecticut General Statute Section nineteen A dash six thirty-eight paren small A paren one. Specifically, the applicant seeks to establish a new healthcare facility to treat individuals with substance use disorders. Today is June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Alicia Novy. Dr. Deidre S. Gifford, the Commissioner of Health Strategy, designated me to serve as hearing officer to rule on all motions and recommended filings or and recommended findings of fact and conclusions of law upon completion of this hearing. Public Act number twenty-one dash two, as amended by Public Act twenty-two dash three, authorizes an agency to hold a public hearing by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his, her, or their name and title at the outset of each occasion. Any such person participates orally during the uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute the device they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine A small A paren small F paren two, which provides that HSP may hold a certificate of need hearing with respect to any certificate of need application submitted under chapter thirty-three sixty-eight Z. Although this will be a discretionary hearing, the manner in which OHS conducts these proceedings will be guided by chapter fifty-four of the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act and the Regulations of the Connecticut General Agencies Sections nineteen A dash nine dash twenty-four. The Office of Health Strategy staff are here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application, and may I ask the applicant witnesses questions? At this time, I'm going to ask each staff member assisting today to identify themselves with their name, the spelling of their last name, and OHS title.
Good morning. Stephen Lazarus, L.A.Z.A.R.U.S.
Good morning, Jessica Rival, capital R.I.V.A.L.
Good morning, Annie Faiella, F.A.I.E.L.L.A., and I am the CON team lead.
And Ms. Rival, if you could just state your title.
I'm sorry, healthcare analyst.
Thank you. All right. Also present is Fay Fentes, who is assisting with the hearing logistics, gathering of the names for public comment, and providing miscellaneous other support. The certificate of need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicants, the members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to OHS are available for review through our Certificate of Need CON portal, which is available on the OHS CON webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with Section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom has notified you in the course of entering this hearing, or if you were here before prior, um, at the point which we started the recording, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the Zoom meeting. And at this point, I would like to start by going over exhibits. I'm going to, um, and the items of which I'm taking administrative notice, and then I will, I will not ask for objections today because the applicant is not being represented by counsel, so they cannot make objections of a legal nature. The CON portal contains the pre-hearing table of record in this case. Exhibits in, um, were identified in the table from A to S. Mr. Lazarus, Ms. Rival, and Ms. Rival, do you have any additional exhibits to enter into the record at this time?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Applicant is hereby notice that I'm taking administrative notice of the following the following documents: the statewide healthcare facilities, statewide healthcare facilities and services plan and its supplements, the facilities and services inventory, OHS acute care hospital discharge database, all payer claims database claims data, and the hospital reporting systems, HRS, financial and utilization data. I may also take administrative notice of prior OHS decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that may be relevant to this matter but which have not yet been identified. At this time, I'm going to mark all identified and marked exhibits entered as full. The applicant is an organization and has chosen not to be represented by an attorney today. Because of this, anybody appearing for the applicant will only be allowed to offer testimony and answer questions from OHS. You will not be allowed to make legal arguments, cross-examine witnesses, or engage in the practice of law in any way. We will be proceeding in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. Like, uh, I would like to advise the applicant that we may, excuse me, that we may ask questions related to your application. Do you feel you have already addressed? We will do this for the purpose of ensuring the public, excuse me, we will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public have knowledge of your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, completeness responses, and pre-file testimony, and that I will do so many times again before issuing my decision. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that, one, all participants, to the extent possible, should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or during, uh, or commenting during proceedings. Excuse me for a second. All participants and the public shall mute their devices and should disable their cameras when we go off the record or take a break. Please be advised that although we try and shut off the hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video that has not been disabled um, will be accessible to all participants. Public comment taken during this hearing will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or OHS staff will call each individual who has signed up by name when it is their turn to speak. Registration for public comment can be done using the Zoom chat function at any time starting now. Please list your name and that you would like to make a comment in the message, and Ms. Fentes will go ahead and put those in order. The public comment start is scheduled to start at twelve P.M. The applicant's witnesses must be available after the public comment as OHS may have follow-up based off public comment. If anybody listening to this hearing would like to submit written comments in lieu of speaking today, you may do so by emailing your comments to concomment@ct.gov. At this point, we're going to go ahead into the technical portion. Uh, again, because there is no counsel for the applicants, I will ask the applicant witnesses to state their names, the spelling of their last names, and their title for the record so that I can now swear you in. Um, Ms. Mullins, if you will, please unmute yourself, state your name, your title for the record.
Uh, yes, my name is Brianna Mullings. Um, Mullings is M.U.L.L.I.N.G.S. and I am, um, State Expansion Associate at AFECT Provider Group.
Is there anybody else for your organization that is with you today?
Yes.
Who is that person?
Brian.
Brian, Brian Proud, P.R.O.U.T., Head of Member Services at AFECT.
Okay. All right. At this point, I will ask you both to raise your right hand so that I can swear you both in. Is there anybody, oh, before I do that, is there anybody else from your organization that is here?
Uh, Renee, looks like she is here as well.
Okay, uh, and can you give me a full name on that person? This is a hearing, so we do ask that everybody give full names so that our stenographer can get their full name.
Yes, uh, Renee Mullings.
Okay, and, uh, if she can, please turn on her camera and state her full name and title for the record.
Um, I don't think that her video is working at this time. I think she's just observing. Um, should she?
If she wants to offer testimony, then she needs to be, is she here as an observer or is she offering testimony?
Observer.
Okay, so we will not swear her in. Okay, so if both you and, uh, Mr. Proud can go, is it Proud or Pruitt?
It's Proud, like sprout without the S.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask
Thanks for asking.
to leave your, to leave your camera, um, yourself unmuted for the moment, because I'm gonna go ahead and swear you both in. Um, do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm that the case may be that the evidence you will provide in your, that, well, was provided in the single prefile, and the evidence that you shall give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury? Mr. Proud?
I do.
Ms. Mullins?
I do.
Okay, so now that I have sworn you both in, I am going to let you know that, Ms. Mullins, you did submit prefile testimony. However, your testimony was not, um, witnessed with an affidavit. So I am going to ask you to resubmit that testimony after, um, after the hearing with an affidavit. So I will be at calling for that as late file one so that you are following proper agency procedures in submitting prefile testimony. Um, so there will be a prefile one of a resubmission of your, your prefiled testimony with an affidavit, okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, when giving your testimony, please make sure to state your full name, um, adopt any written testimony that you have submitted prior to the record today. Uh, witnesses, and, um, so now I'm going to go ahead and ask Ms. Mullins, since you are the only one who submitted your prefiled testimony, to go ahead and start with stating your name again, your full name, and state whether you adopt your prefiled testimony.
Yes, my name's Brianna Mullings, and I do adopt the prefiled testimony.
Okay, so at this point, I will allow you to go ahead and, um, proceed with your testimony. And I will ask that you define any acronyms, uh, for the benefit of the public and the clarity of the record.
Okay. Um.
We do ask that you not, oh, I should have probably give you a little more, um, we ask that you not just read your testimony since you have adopted your prefiled testimony. Um, so this is, normally, this is why people have attorneys, because your attorney will guide you through this process, or why, uh, why organizations and entities have attorneys. Um, we're asking that you, you don't just read your prefile. We have that. It's an exhibit. I have read it myself a few times. Um, so this is for you to give a, you know, to explain your prefiled testimony, to elaborate on facts you want us to, um, to know and hit on points that you feel are important for us.
I see. Thank you for the clarity. I appreciate that. Um, yeah, so Brianna Mullings with AFECT Provider Group. Uh, we are seeking to serve those within the state of Kentucky, um, that are struggling
I'm sorry, this is Connecticut.
in, sorry, I live in, um, Connecticut, um, that struggle with substance abuse disorder. We are a virtual treatment center. Um, and we, um, serve those with stimulant cannabis, alcohol, um, and opiate use disorder. AFECT, uh, Provider Group is active in, um, a few other states. We hope as a whole, we can serve the entire, um, country, all of these states. I think right now we're projected at two thousand and twenty-five. And um, let's, let's see, we, I did include within, um, exhibit, uh, or my prefiled testimony, um, why telehealth, um, is such a important aspect, um, to the substance abuse treatment field, um, as well as the peer-reviewed study that was done, um, with AFECT and some of our current, um, percentages when it comes to, um, our use of telehealth and then traditional, um, treatment. And, um, I think, can I ping Brian Proud if I missed anything that was of note to include there?
Um, he did not file prefiled testimony. Um, we do have rules of practice for agency hearings. Um, so he can answer questions that are asked for of him, but he cannot offer testimony because he did not submit prefiled testimony. Um, normally, a attorney will have all of their witnesses enter this testimony. Um, but we are, we do have, I have about sixteen questions, give or take, um, that I do intend to ask, um, so he can answer as in those as well. Um, are you finished with your, your testimony or?
Um, I will add that all of our clinical staff is, um, credentialed, licensed, um, we do not have any clinical staff in this, in the state of Connecticut right now, um, that will, that will follow uh, licensing approval, and we will be enrolling with Medicaid, working with, um, private insurances. Um, you know, things like that, but we, all of our clinical staff will be licensed and, um, those credentials are verified as well as, um, background checks internally.
All right, anything else that you would like to add, or, um, are you okay with me proceeding to questions for you and your, and the representatives of the organization?
Um, we contract with, uh, national payers as well, um, and I guess that would be, that'd be it at, at present. See what questions you have.
Okay, um, I would, I'll start with my first question. Can you please describe the owner, um, and actually, I, just because I know you are not, um, represented by an attorney, if there is a question that you feel that you cannot adequately answer, uh, I will, or I get an answer that I feel is not adequately answering that, I will give you a chance to submit a written response, um, as a late file exhibit. So we will then ask that you follow up in writing for that question, okay? Um, can you please describe the ownership structure of AFECT Provider Group and its parent corporation?
Yes, so AFECT Provider Group is, um, owned by Dr. Doug Elwood. Um, he has a hundred percent ownership. And it is, um, AFECT Provider Group runs with the, our MSO, AFECT Therapeutics, Inc.
It's an MSO, I'm sorry, don't forget. Uh, if you use an acronym, we ask that you identify what that stands for.
Yes, I'm sorry, uh, Managed Service Organization.
Okay, so it, it runs a hundred percent by MSO?
Um, yes, and I think I'll defer this question, um, getting into the, the, the Managed Service Organization to Brian Proud. He's got a little bit more info on that.
So, yes, as, and Brian Proud, P.R.O.U.T., Head of Member Services. Um, so AFECT Provider Group is a, is a wholly owned professional corporation, um, that is owned, as mentioned, by Dr. Doug Elwood, who is a physician. Um, we, the, the construct we have in place is that there is a managed service, uh, agreement, so an MSA is in place between the professional corporation and the managed service organization, the latter of which is AFECT Therapeutics Incorporated, um, where AFECT, Inc., um, Incorporated, uh, provides all non-clinical back office administrative functions for the professional corporation. This is in order to be compliant with corporate practice of medicine, um, regulations, uh, that are obviously very state-by-state dependent. And so, um, that is the general construct that's in place right now. Obviously, uh, with our, um, Connecticut filing, we are, this is very early in the process, and we are not live, uh, yet, so this is all, uh, the construct is, is on paper at the moment.
Um, can you discuss when this provider was established nationally and its current telehealth model?
Uh, I can, yes. So AFECT Incorporated, and so AFECT Provider Group and AFECT Therapeutics Incorporated are collectively referred to as AFECT, and we could submit as a post-filing, um, document, sort of outlining the, the legalese for the various corporate structures, but.
Please, I'm gonna ask for that as, um, as late file too.
Great, um, so AFECT, Inc., uh, began as a, uh, as a research study funded by the National Institutes of Health, uh, the National Institute of Drug Abuse, NIDA, um, with a, a research study demonstrating the efficacy of a digitally-delivered therapeutic for the treatment of stimulant use disorder. Uh, and this was done in late twenty-twenty-one in the state of Arizona, um, on the backs of a very successful NIDA grant study, we, uh, we launched um, sort of a formal, um, privatized payer-led, payer, insurance payer-led offering. Uh, and we launched officially in Arizona in February of two thousand and twenty-two, with Nevada following shortly thereafter in March of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, since then, um, as, as Ms. Mullings alluded to, we've expanded into now sixteen active states, uh, where we deliver services, um, beyond just the scope of stimulant use disorder. We added a cannabis use disorder program. We added an alcohol use disorder program. Um, and we are in the process of launching an opioid use disorder program as well. Um, during that time, we have contracted with, uh, payers both at a national, regional level. We have, um, achieved Medicaid enrollment in far more than the sixteen active states. I think we have twenty-plus active Medicaid enrollments, uh, to go with our, um, outpatient-level substance use disorder license, um, that we obtain in each state, uh, and at the moment have many millions of lives covered uh, under various payer contracts, uh, again, to include Medicaid, Marketplace, and employer insurance plans.
Who bills, um, for, in your current telehealth model?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Who bills for services in your current telehealth model?
So we, so we contract with insurance payers, and, uh, we deliver services on their behalf and then bill the payers.
So who, um, who is doing that billing? Is it in your organization?
Uh, is in the, a named person?
Well, is, I, is there, um, is it, is it like an accountant? Are they located in this building, or I'm asking for like just who prepares the bills that go to your, your?
Certainly. Yeah, we, we have an entire revenue cycle management organization, um, to include a, a head of revenue cycle management. We have, um, a head of finance and accounting who sort of oversees the entire operation. We have a number of uh, individual contributors who do various aspects of the, the billing, the claims adjustments, the, uh, you know, denials, as, as those tend to happen, um, and refilings, and so on and so forth.
Now, where are they located?
Uh, there, so a, as a telehealth provider, AFECT is, we generally speaking, hire non-clinical staff, that's an important distinction to make, without regard for physical location. So I am personally located in Charlottesville, Virginia. Um, our head of RCM, I candidly, I, I don't know where he lives because he just joined a few weeks ago. We have one gentleman, uh, who's in the Atlanta region, but we are, it, it is a telehealth organization, so, um, our management team resides all over the country to include in Washington, D.C., Alexandria, et cetera.
Do, does your organization provide prescriptions for patients?
We, at the moment, in advance of our opioid use disorder program launch, which is not yet active, we do not prescribe controlled substances.
Okay.
We, for stimulant, alcohol, and cannabis use disorders, there are adjuvant medications that are, that are providers at their clinical discretion, can prescribe, and they're all licensed to do so in order to, you know, help, um, but there, there's no M.A.T. solution, sorry, medically assisted treatment, um, for, uh, those three use disorders. For opioid use disorder, that is obviously an entire, um, different matter altogether, but we are not yet actively doing so.
Okay, so you said that providers can provide, um, uh, right prescriptions.
Yes, ma'am.
Who are those providers and what are their qualifications?
Uh, those providers are, we have upwards of fifty providers, um, across the U.S., depending on the state we're in, which of course regulates everything we do in that state. It is either a psychiatrist or a psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, a PMHNP. Um, some states have, uh, practice autonomy for, uh, nurse practitioners, in which case we, we use nurse practitioners. Um, some states require psychiatrists, psychiatrists, excuse me, um, to deliver, uh, for the provider intervention for our encounter schedule, which I'm of course happy to get into.
Um, will the provider join any national, uh, quality societies in the future, and if so, which ones, and what's the timing on that?
So we are CARF accredited, uh, AFECT Incorporated is CARF, yeah, sorry, oh, gosh, what in the world is CARF? Let me pull up the.
Oh, you can just spell it for me first.
Yeah, sorry, C.A.R.F. It's the Commission of Accreditation on Rehabilitation Facilities. And it is, um, in my humble opinion, the, the gold standard for substance use disorder treatment facilities. Uh, we received a three-year, which is the highest, um, award accreditation for our Inc., um, last fall, or summer, rather, um, and, uh, we will, we are in the process of our CARF commission, commission on accreditation rehab facilities, um, starting our accreditation for, um, the PC entity, so the Provider Group entity as well. That's happening this summer.
Please explain what protocols are followed for providing IOP treatment via telehealth as opposed to in-person?
Sure, so I, I would say the, without getting into the specifics of the policies and procedures, we are governed by and adherent to the state-specific regulations.
Um, okay, that doesn't, I'm actually more interested in knowing what you're doing with an IOP telehealth program versus in-person. Um, and if that's a little hard to answer right now, you can, um, as a written question, because you have follow-ups.
Sure, no, I'm happy to give the, sort of the, the overarching view, which is that, again, a, all of our encounters are through our app, which is secure telehealth Zoom integration. And so for the intensive outpatient, the IOP, um, my froze, okay, sorry. Um, for the IOP program, um, the encounter schedule looks a little something like a weekly one-on-one with their independently licensed addiction counselor, as well as three, three-hour group sessions during the week. Um, and, uh, in addition, there is a as-needed provider, um, medical appointment. It's generally about once a month, but that is entirely up to the, the clinician's discretion, the provider's discretion, I should say. So our telehealth IOP program is three, three hours of, um, IOP group, IOP-centric group with IOP-specific curriculum, um, and then a, a half-hour one-on-one, and that's, that's sort of the minimum each week.
Who's with a medical appointment with?
Uh, that is the, the provider, and so that is either, depending on the state, a psych, a psychiatrist or a PMHNP.
Okay, um, how are your, how is your IOP different from those that are in-person?
I, I guess in terms of logistics, or it's, 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 it's via telehealth. It's, it's in the setting, not dissimilar from this.
Okay.
And so our, okay, sorry.
Sorry, can you provide us with a copy of your protocols for your IOP treatment?
Certainly.
Okay, that'll be late file number three. Um, what specific steps will you take to abide by Medicaid access standards?
So general, so, uh, again, and I, apologies for signing like a broken record here, um, we meet the standard in each state that's set forth, and so, um, I, I guess a point of clarity, when you say Medicaid accessibility standards, could you, could you clarify a bit?
Um, we want to know, uh, what you will do to make sure that people on Medicaid are able to access your program in this state of Connecticut.
Sure, yeah, so, um, a, as I'm sure you're way more familiar than I, uh, I'm certain the Connecticut, the state of Connecticut has a number of, uh, programs for those who perhaps, um, you know, similar to Lifeline, um, need, need a cellphone, um, you know, happily, it's, I think ninety-seven percent of Americans have a, have a working smartphone. Um, and so we also work very closely with And so we also work very closely with local resources once we're active in a state. To provide, you know, additional support, whether it be programs that um, allow for additional data. Sharing plans, um, that we, that tends to be a not a barrier, but certainly a hiccup for some members, you know, towards the end of the month, they run out of data. And so um, you know, providing resources to point folks to areas with perhaps free wifi, um, that are secure and private, of course, um, but then, you know, local resources that or national and regional resources as well, that, that can help, um, whether it be enrolling somebody in a, in a Lifeline type plan or, or otherwise.
So Lifeline, who would pay for that? Would that be up to?
Federal government.
Okay, um, so the, how much data do these people get? How much data is used by your service?
I, I, I would defer that question to a, a follow-on. I, I can't speak to the, the federal program limits on on data sharing. So I, you know, we would, we would have to look into that, but that feels like a question I can't answer at the moment.
Okay, um. Discuss Affect's pro- uh, program member retention rates and the uh, abstinence rates, and I have here a it looks like a note that it was on page twenty-five of your application. So can you talk to us a little bit about these rates that you are putting forth?
Certainly, and, and I think my personal opinion is anytime we're talking about percentages and numbers over time, this may be a good additional follow-up filing. If I'm honest, but uh, I would say generally speaking, we have found, and this is through a a healthcare, a health plan funded research analysis for our outcomes to be twice that of, of standard treatment as usual. So this was not a study that we paid for, this was one of our partners, um, our health plan partners. And so we've seen particularly with the stimulant use disorder population. I mean, the, the honest truth is there's really no treatment available for the vast majority of these folks today. There is no telehealth outpatient program that is focused on stimulant use disorder, and so the, the sort of quote business as usual treatment outcomes are quite poor, and so we've been resoundly um, excited and, and encouraged by the percentage of retention we have. Um, in- interesting note on abstinence, so I will, I will say that we are a harm reduction program. And so um, we use, we use urine detection screens and measures of abstinence as a means to encourage, motivate counsel and provide contingency management, not as a punitive measure. Which is to say, nobody's been kicked out of our program for a quote positive screen. But rather that's a, an opportunity to understand why with their counselor, to, to dig in further, understand any sort of triggers. And so on and so forth. So as far as the, the specific numbers, I don't have them offhand, I, I apologize, but we will certainly follow file. The retention, um, adherence numbers, we have all that, we can wrap up with a bow and send to you all, of course.
So I'm going to actually make that, I'm going to expand that late file number four, because I would like to see um, all of your evidence of, because I, one of my follow-up questions is I would like to see evidence of your retention rates, your abstinence rates, and I would also like to see, um, because I have questions about your dropout rates. And especially between, and why in your completeness letter two, the uh, attendance rates between months four and six increased. So I would like to see any studies that you have, that you have done, or anybody has done for you. That show the effectiveness of your program. And because you have mentioned that you have these studies, um, and then any evidence that you have about the um, retention rates, abstinence rates, and the um, and the attend, uh, the attendance rates of your program.
Certainly.
And the cost effectiveness of them, if you have anything on that as well.
Sounds good. We look forward to sharing.
All right, that'll be late fat number four. Please describe the evidence-based curriculum according to the matrix model and living in balance on page one of your profile.
Forgive me, de- describe what the matrix model is or?
Well, we, you know, I mean, uh, th- those are great words that you used, however, um, we would like to know what evidence-based curriculum you're using. Also, um, what is the matrix model and living in balance?
Got it. Um, so I think that that, w- we're happy to share additional research that points at the efficacy of those particular frameworks. I would say those are, those are recovery frameworks, perhaps. So matrix model is a framework, without speaking out of turn, I'm not an expert on, on the matrix model, but it is a a, a framework that we use to develop curriculum that is served up through our app. Things like mindfulness and better habit forming and, um, and so on and so forth. Again, we can share sort of an outline of, of what the curriculum looks like that's served to our members in app. And uh, and yes, living in balance is just, is another paradigm that we have adopted to develop content for our members to help them in their recovery journey.
Now, um, the app you use uh, or the app that you use, is that proprietary? Is that created by you?
It is.
Okay, um, and is that owned completely by you, or is that uh, like an off-the-shelf product that you bought from a company?
It is entirely homegrown and built from the ground up by us.
Okay, um, has its efficacy, quality and content been independently studied?
I don't, I, I don't believe so. I, I guess that's sort of a broad question. We, you know, from a security standpoint, absolutely, we adhere to, and I can have our C T O point to you know, any number of um, security standards that we meet, so maybe that's a separate follow-up item, but I guess I would want clarity on the, the types of external validations that you're, you're seeking.
Well, I should rephrase that. So um, has the, we're, we're talking about the content and the efficacy of the content in the, in the app.
Got it.
You start with that question, and then I'll go on to a question about, um, about the security of the, of whatever patient data.
Understood.
Okay, so um, is there, uh, have you studied, has, have you independently studied the quality of the content in your application, in your, in your app?
That I will need to, that's a follow-up question. I don't know offhand.
Okay, um, and then just as a question about security, um, is the are the users expected to input um, personal health information into your app?
They are, yes.
Okay, and um, when they do that, um, what kind of security do you have in place to make sure that that information is protected?
Right, and that's, I, I will defer to my, my technology friends on what specific uh, bits we have in place, but I'm sorry?
If you could include that in lead file five.
Certainly, yes, and, and you know, we, we have business associate agreements, B A A's in place with any number of vendors we have, all of whom are HIPAA compliant. Meet forty-two CFR part two standards and so on and so forth.
How does affect surpass per um, traditional treatment programs, retention rates and absence rates while being more cost-effective?
The, I, I'm tripped up by the cost-effective, cost-effective for whom?
Well, let's start with the easier one. How does affect surpass traditional treatments, programs, retention rates and absence rates?
I, I don't want to speak ill of my in-person treatment friends, uh, by any means. I think what we have done is tapped into um, something very unique in that contingency management, which is a decades-old practice of providing financial incentives for sought behavior as a, as a general concept. That has been proven and we can, we're happy to share some of um, the independently published research done long before we existed, that showed the efficacy of that approach in combination with cognitive behavioral therapy, C B T, which is what our counselors provide has been unbelievably effective in, and treating stimulant alcohol and cannabis, and of course opioid use disorders.
Well, we're looking, I think, um, we're looking for data that shows your treatment program, so that was maybe done ten years ago is not going to be as helpful.
So forgive me, I was, I was trying to paint the picture as to sort of how we got here, and the, the fact that we're using evidence-based practices, and so what we've done is, no one has been able to tap into the delivery of that contingency management paradigm in an effective, broad-scale enterprise approach, and we have done so through our app and through telehealth, and so accessibility being one of the biggest challenges that this population, when I say this population, forgive me, I, I mean, the sort of stimulant use disorder population has. In that, they don't have the means to get childcare, to drive to a church forty-five minutes away, to sit in a group therapy meeting twice a week. That just doesn't, that's, that's not a fair assumption to make on that population. We're already laden with stigma and, and guilt and shame, and so we have been able to put treatment in their pocket. And have it be entirely covered by their state's Medicaid plan. Uh, and we've been able to, to drive outcomes and, and drive recovery for now tens of thousands of, of members lifetime.
Okay, do you have um, any um, any evidence of your, your treatment rates? Your absence rates?
I do, yes, and, and we can, uh, and sorry, just, just for clarity, because we can send you screenshots of our internal business intelligence B I tooling that pulls directly from our data warehouse for these types of things. When, when you say, like, is that sufficient evidence?
What, what we normally look for in a substance use disorder application is, um, we do look for what your treatment facility is, and, and what you, you did mention that you can do all these things, but you didn't actually provide evidence of your your entities. Like what the dropout rate, um, what your treatment rates were, how your, how many patients obtained sobriety, how many maintain sobriety, things like that. That normally would come into an application or not to necessarily included in this application. So now those are things that we are trying to find, because we want to make sure that any entity that comes into the state of Connecticut has you know, shows us that they are a useful entity, and while you said we do all these wonderful things, you didn't actually give us numbers.
Understood, oh, totally, yeah, for sure, and, and so we're more than happy to do so, with of course the caveat that none of those are representative of Connecticut.
And, and that's, and that's fine, but we do, we um, we do look for um, statistics and, you know, that I, I, um, I guess, I think you might have been um, assuming this was more of just a licensing process, this is an administrative um, request that you're making to the state to come in, so we do follow certain things, and we, we have to look at treatment rates and and access for Medicaid people and indig- and indigent people, so these are things that we are very actively looking at. As well as our cohorts who are on the call as well from D M S and D S S, who are also looking at those types of things as well.
Absolutely, and I, that makes a ton of sense, and of course, we want to do our best to put our, our, our best foot forward for the state of Connecticut and um, and show that, you know, this isn't some fly-by-night entity that's trying to come and, and win contracts in the state, that's far from the case.
Okay, so um, I'm going to go ahead and shift some of my questions now. We're going to go ahead to questions about um, the cost of your care, so I'm going to just give you a heads up that this is where we're going. Will affect develop a charity care policy?
Could you define charity care policy for me?
Well, charity care is care for people who cannot afford treatment.
Right. So I, I guess my, my answer to that is, would those individuals qualify for Connecticut Medicaid coverage?
Let's say no, those people do not. So these are indigent people who may not qualify for Medicaid, how, what options are available to them?
Got it. Um, I, I, I can't say with certainty that we would have the wherewithal and sorry, not the wherewithal, but the, the resources to stand up such a program, but happy to look into it a bit more uh, and share that as a follow-up to understand what would be required for us to, to do so, but I, I, I'm not familiar with Connecticut-specific standards for that.
Well, you, you did, your documents submitted about charity care and um, sliding scale payments differ between each round of documents that you put in, so uh, you know, um, one of them says you aren't, one of them says you will um, eventually, but there is no you know, you're offering two different answers, and they don't, they don't drive together. I will give you a, a clarification of whether or not you will offer charity care in Connecticut at a sliding scale for self-pay patients. It says I'm sorry, uh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, and this is Breanna Mullings for the refer, um. I believe the, the discrepancy there might be that we don't, we, we don't have the charity care in, in place, but on a, and Brian, correct me here, but on a case-by-case basis, if that was something that an individual within the, the state of Connecticut required care and, and was not able to, nor did they qualify for Medicaid purposes. On a, on a case-by-case basis that we would, you know, do what we need to do um, to help them.
Would there be a policy about that? Because it's, it's one thing to say we, we can do what we need to do, but it, it, we normally people have policies, and then you come in, and if you can't afford it, you look through it, you read it, then you follow the instructions in that policy and apply.
Yeah, I, I think this, this should be another post here in follow-up, um, for us to get our ducks in a row there, so.
We'll do that as seven?
Great.
All right, um, let's see. In O H and completeness letter one, tables three and four are very close in price. How would an indigent person be able to afford the cost of treatment at your facility? Or a self, uh, so we're focusing on self-pay patients, um, who would be indigent, how would they be able to afford the cost if the cost is very similar for say, your self-pay and your people who are paying with a, um, with uh, you know, in um, commercial insurance or Medicaid.
I, sorry, could you, could you restate that? I'm, I'm sorry.
Completeness letter one, table, O H S tables three and four were very close in price. How would an indigent person afford the self-pay rate?
I, I would say that that, to me, that falls into the previous question about, um, that we would need to get back to you on. At, at the moment, you know, I, are, w- we've seen a tremendous drop in self-pay. We have self-pay members, of course, um, but there are, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there are in states where you're delivering Medicaid, and this is state-by-state dependent, of course, there are some states where we our self-pay rates have to be above the floor of Medicaid reimbursement at the V I P, at the V I P service level. But anyway, I, I don't want to go down that path, because I, I don't have all that offhand, but the indigenous population, um, self-pay ability, to me, falls on that, the filing seven that we'll get back to you on. Okay.
All right, um, my next question is going to we're going to go back to some just general questions, um, now. Can you provide the number, the type and credentials of staff affect will employ upon commencement of services in Connecticut? And what the projected growth would be over the next three years? So can we get a, like a listing? I will, we, we hope to have this many people um, providing services in Connecticut.
We could absolutely provide projections. Um, those projections are of course based on uh, licensing and Medicaid enrollment timing, uh, and then subsequent payer uh, contracting and credentialing timelines. As a fairly early-stage company, we don't have the benefit of hiring whole reams of staff ahead of launch, that's just not economically viable for us, and so we have to do so kind of smartly as we're entering a state and, and do so cost-effectively. Uh, I will say that in addition to Connecticut Medicaid, which we fully intend, of course, to uh, apply and be enrolled for. We have already firm interest from uh, Optum, Humana and Cigna. All of whom are very interested from a marketplace and employer commercial payer landscape who are desperate for us to be active in Connecticut, and so all of which is to say the, we would have independently licensed counselors pursuant to the, the state licensure regulations and Connecticut Medicaid standards. As well as um, the providers, which uh, if I could just have the providers, which uh, if I could just have a look real quickly. It looks like Connecticut is an independent practice state, so we would likely have um, a PMHMP, the um, psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, uh, serve as the provider. And then as far as the, the projections, uh, we're happy to based on, you know, say X hundred members, we would have this many staff. But all these folks would be, um, of course, licensed in Connecticut, credentialed with the appropriate payers as well as um, with um, Connecticut Medicaid as well.
Um, all right. So my next question is also based on your first completeness letter. Um, on page, let me just make sure I've got the right page here. Do, okay, on page eight of the first completeness responses, it states, our admission team sets very clear boundaries with potential members concerning requirements for privacy during enrollment in our program. These requirements are reinforced by our clinical staff. In cases where a member is not in a private space, the clinical staff will remove him or her from the group setting. What happens to the individual? When that happens? Like, do they, do they go to a private space? Um, like, do you do, um, is the uh, client accommodated in some other way? Um, or um, how does the affect or does um, affect decline to treat the individual that day? You, what is the pro- procedure for that?
Yeah, I, I think it, the, it's not knowing the specific example, right? Talking in sort of hypotheticals, if, if a member was, say, unwilling to mute their phone and they were in a home with children very loud and the counselor continues to ask them to mute, and they mute them as they have the responsibility to do so as the, the host, and they take it off mute and they're I, you know, um, being disruptive, the counselor would um, would remove them from the Zoom session. Uh, and then, you know, likely follow up with them after a group to reinforce, hey, here are the group rules that you signed up for as part of your consent to treat. This is what we agreed to. This is all part of in your treatment pla- excuse me, in your treatment plan. Uh, and then I, I, again, as a non-clinician, I would presume that they would use that as a, as a teaching moment in their next one-on-one session to understand why they felt that they could violate the, the group norms and, and uh, the group rules.
Um, all right, and on page thirty-six of your application, you state that um, you will have spaces for programs. Um, what does that mean? Uh, does that mean physical space? Uh, what kind of, will people be coming in to do a program?
And sorry, the um, it, it said spaces for programs?
Yes. Uh, sorry, the printed out version I have does not do up here. Yes, uh, let's see, uh, question twenty-one. Please provide a detailed explanation of how this proposal will improve cost-effective uh, healthcare delivery in the region. Please provide supporting evidence. And you um, talk about eliminating physical infrastructure and streamlining staffing. We will dramatically cut down overhead costs. Spaces we would need to acquire across the state can be used by programs with a mission for in-place service, uh, for in-person services, or perhaps even inpatient programs. What does that mean?
Yeah, so that, that language is a little um, a little confusing, I would, I would agree. Um, we, we would have a singular space. We would have a uh, an address that is local to Connecticut uh, for our state business license filings and so on and so forth. Uh, that office would be there administratively only as a telehealth-only company. We would not see members in that space. We would not have staff working in that space. Um, it is, it is for the purposes of having a, of a state, uh, sorry, a, an address in the state.
Okay.
And so we, we then are, you know, and it doesn't need to be some ten thousand square foot place where we have people coming every day and then all the associated costs with that, that we would then have to pass on to our, you know, downstream to make our prices higher or what have you. So I, I do firmly believe that it would reduce overall cost.
So who would be working at that space?
No one.
No one. So you're just gonna have a building with nobody in it?
We would have a, we would have a, a very modest office um, for the purposes of um, you know, mail filings that we would then forward to our headquarters and so on and so forth.
So who would have access to that space?
Uh, any number of our administrative staff. But it would not be for the use of clinical encounters.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask uh, Mr. Lazarus, Ms. Rival and Ms. Faiela if you um, have any questions that you would like to ask at this point.
Um, this is Stephen Lazarus. Um, I, if I can just get a clarification on the billing, I know you talked about the billing earlier. In the beginning, you were talking about how you would, you have this uh, um, office that does all the billing. Would all, would they also be the ones doing the billing for the Connecticut? Division or provider?
Yes, sir.
That'd be done through Connecticut.
The, that, the same um, sort of centralized uh, billing, back office finance function does so for all of our states.
And in order to get licensed in Connecticut and bill through Connecticut is probably the purpose you have that space and address in Connecticut?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have for clarification. Thank you. Almost it.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to um, recommend that we take a fifteen-minute break. Um, we will come back at ten-ten um, to see if there are any additional questions from the um, the OHS staff or um, any um, anything that we would like to go ahead and put into the um, the uh, late files. And then at that point, I think um, we will jump out of order a little bit and I will go ahead and at that point, we can give you the list of late files that we are requesting so that you can have that prior to us going on what's probably going to be a long break until the public portion. I will just, before we go on this break, remind everybody that if you would like to make a public comment, please do sign up in our chat function with Ms. Fentes um, or with, she is actually on as OHS HSP host. So you can let her know your name and title and that you would like to make a public comment. Um, and at this point, we'll take a break and I will see everybody back here at, let's give you fifteen full minutes. So we'll be back here at ten-twelve. Thank you, everybody. Perfect. Thank you. As you were just notified by Zoom, you are being recorded. Yours remaining, if you choose not to be recorded, you can exit the hearing at this time. Uh, if you remain in the hearing, you consent to being recorded. All right. We're going to go ahead and get restarted. Um, this is the hearing, the CON hearing for affect provider group PC, docket number twenty-four dash three-two-six-six-two. Um, the app, uh, the applicant is seeking a certificate of need for the establishment of a new healthcare facility under Connecticut General Statute, section nineteen A dash six-thirty-eight, paren small A, paren one. All right. So at this point, um, we have finished with the public, or sorry, with the tech, we are finishing with the technical portion. Um, we will be asking for those eight late files from you and we will be sending you by the end of this week. Um, so that should go out by um, June fourteenth. A letter with the eight requested late files. How long do you think your um, the uh, organization will need to um, provide those eight late files to us?
We can turn those around quite quickly. Um, I, is, does the state have a preference on just how expedited things are?
No, I mean, we, we just want you to have adequate time to get them to us. Um, uh, I mean, I was going to suggest two, two weeks is um, June. Uh, I was actually looking at June twentieth. Do you think that is in a reasonable date for actually, well, if I get you out to the and sorry, wrong day. I am not, that is not two weeks.
I was gonna say that's
By the fourteenth, um, how does June tw- or twenty-eighth sound for a due date on those?
Should be just fine. Uh, you know, I think some of the, some of the detailed data uh, filings may be the only time-consuming bit, but that sounds great and we're happy.
Yeah, okay.
Make this a priority, of course.
If that does not work for you, um, there will be a contact person in there. Please do contact them. Um, we do not allow um, uh, we do not allow um, you to contact the hearing officers as I am a, um, I have to remain a neutral party. Um, let's see. Okay, so we will have that um, for the late files and uh, the written responses by June twenty eighth uh, two thousand, uh, twenty-twenty-four, um, by four P M. Okay? And then um, I, I have some questions that have come to us from DPH. Um, let's see. Okay.
Just, just as a request, hearing officer Novi, I believe I got all the late files, but if, if you could just briefly review them for me, so I get them clearly in the record, I would greatly appreciate.
Okay. Um, Annie, do you have that list yet?
We don't, we're still compiling the list to make sure we have all the details. So we would, we'll have it, we should have it ready by tomorrow. We can share with um, uh, with the court reporter as well.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so I had a question coming from one of the other state agencies. Um, uh, will uh, okay, will um, you be having the Connecticut Department of, Department of Health licensed staff living in other states to provide services in Connecticut?
That, that's a wonderful question. I, I think that is certainly part of our um, so potentially, yes, would, would be the short answer. Uh, a little more, I guess, clarity there. Um, obviously being in sort of the tri-state area, if there's folks that we end up hiring that are licensed in, say, New York and New Jersey and Connecticut, um, of course, we would, what's most important is that they are, in fact, they have up-to-date licensing and credentialing for the state of Connecticut. But um, yes, that is, that often happens as a, as obviously as a telehealth organization, we have staff that don't necessarily reside in the state in which they're delivering services, but presuming they're meeting all of the state-specific requirements, then um, then that's just fine.
Okay, how will you uh, ensure that anybody prescribing controlled substances is licensed in this state properly?
Yes, I mean, so we, so that, that would get there's countless checks along the way. We, that conversation wouldn't even occur before, uh, so, sorry, I was gonna pull up CAQH as one, as primary source verification as a step during credentialing. Um, we use a, a, a platform that is uh, the Council for a Court Affordable Quality Healthcare, CAQH, which sets the standard for um, for credentialing and licensing and primary source verification uh, validation, I should say. Uh, so there are numerous checks along the way to include ongoing monitoring uh, of those individuals and of their respective Drug Enforcement Administration DEA um, licensure's ability to prescribe um, buprenorphine, for instance. And so that, ma- many checks along the way to include a payer credentialing, perhaps most critically.
Okay. All right, um, that is it for the questions that we have this morning. I am going to um, just remind you that we do have the public portion at twelve P M. We do ask that the witnesses or the applicant, which are yourself and um, Ms. Mullins, that you be available during the um, public portion and then ask for any qu- uh, follow-up questions we may have based off the public portion. If I'm going to make a, a last announcement that if anybody would like to make a comment in the public portion, they may do, they may sign up to do so through the chat function um, with OHS HSP host, who is Ms. Fentes. Uh, you can let her know that you are interested in speaking, let her know your name, your full name, um, and your contact information, and she will put you into the list. Um, and then we will come back at twelve for that. If you would, oh, also I will remind you that if you would like to make a comment, but you would like to not speak today, you may submit written comments to CONcomment@CT.gov. Again, that's CONcomment@CT.gov. And I will take written submissions for up, for a week from today. And that includes through June nineteenth. So if you'd like to do a written um, a written public comment, please do that before June nineteenth. Any comments after June nineteenth will be added into the CON filing, but they will not be made in exhibit. All right, thank you. And I will see everybody back here at twelve P M for the public portion.
I do have one question before we uh, turn. Um, for the intensive outpatient, um, the procedures and the policies and procedures regarding that um, in our follow-up submission, um, that was our policies were submitted in, I believe it's exhibit P, um, just the responses that were given to the four questions, um, policies and procedures for IOP were included in that. I just want to make sure that
Um, you can choose to rely on that, or you can choose to look at your polit- uh, what you're submitting to us again. That is up to you. I am going to give you, you can answer that question in any way you choose. Um, so that's going to be a decision on your part, how you guys choose to answer that. But I did uh, make that a late file and I would like to see that again. Okay?
That's good. Ms., Ms. Novi, sorry, one last question for me. Is, is it the same Zoom link for at, at high noon?
Yep, it's the same Zoom link. You can either stay on, turn your camera off, turn your, turn your um, your microphone off, or you can come back in to the link um, at noon.
Yes, ma'am. Terrific.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you guys then.
All right. Okay, as you were just informed by the Zoom voice, uh, this meeting is, this hearing is being recorded and um, and by remaining in this hearing, you room, um, you consent to being recorded. If you do not consent to being recorded, please exit the meeting at this time. All right. So at this point, I'm going to ask um, Ms. Fentes if we have had any sign-ups. Um, Fay, have we had any sign-ups?
We have not.
Okay, um, all right. So welcome back. For those of you joining us, this is the second portion of today's hearing concerning the uh, the CON application filed by the affect provider group, docket number twenty-four dash three-two-six-six-two dash CON. We had the technical portion this morning. Um, since we have not had any sign-ups, I will give everybody one last reminder that you may sign up to speak if you would like to. Um, at this time, you please send a chat message to OHS HSP and include your full name and that you would like to speak. Also, if you would like to submit written comment, we will sub, we will accept written comments through the end of June, um, June nineteenth. Actually, that's a holiday. So we'll go to, through the end of June twentieth twenty-twenty-four at four P M at CONcomment@CT.gov. Again, that's CONcomment@CT.gov. Okay, before we, um, while I give people a moment to ask if they have any additional questions, I have one additional question, question for Mr. Proust. Um, uh, this question came from one of our community, our um, our sister organizations that was attending the hearing. Um, the question is, do you track adverse outcomes from patients, including ED usage, inpatient admissions and overdoses?
Uh, that's a, that's a great question. So we, we do to the best of our ability, meaning if that information is known to us, we, we capture it as such. We, we have a number of payer partnerships in other states where uh, for instance, mutual members, if they are admitted to the emergency department, they will share that information with us. Um, and we're able to action on that accordingly. So uh, w- we obviously would, would love to know what happens with our members at all times and, and we capture it as such, but sometimes it's out of um, the realm of possibility of just, you know, if they are discharged, for instance, and they are admitted to the emergency department. Um, you know, there's only so much that we can do. But yes, we, we are actively um, tracking social determinants of health criteria and, and otherwise for our, for active members, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Um, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Fay, again, um, have you gotten any requests?
I have not.
Okay. So in light of no um, requests to enter public comment, uh, I will remind um, the applicant that you um, that we will request late files be um, submitted to our office uh, or a request be made for an extension time, if you do need that, by June twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-four at four P M. Um, they can be submitted into the portal and emailed as well. Um, and at this point, do you have any other questions or concerns over the late files that we are asking for?
I don't believe so. I, I think it sounds like you will, uh, there will be furnished to us that the formal list by tomorrow. Okay.
Or by the end of the day on Friday.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Via email. It'll also be uploaded to the portal as well, so you can always keep an eye on the portal. And you should find a, in case you lose your copy, there will be one there as well.
Terrific, thank you.
All right, so at this point, I will open it up one last time to my analysts, Mr. Lazarus, Ms. Fiella and Ms. Rival. Do you have any additional questions you would like to ask at this time?
Not at this time.
I do not.
All right, so I will be closing this hearing now. It is now twelve oh four. I would like to thank everybody from the applicants that have attended today and anybody from the public for attending our hearing today. This hearing is going, is hereby adjourned, but the record will remain open until it is closed by OHS in the future. Thank you, everybody, for attending and have a nice afternoon. All right.
Thank you so much for the consideration.
Bye bye.